The North Rock Planning Commission to order. If you will, please call the roll.
Alexander Banks.
Here.
Blasco.
Here.
Chambers.
Present.
Dietz. Foster.
Here.
Phillips. White.
Here.
Chairman Clifton.
Here. I hear a motion.
To excuse the absentee.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to excuse those commissioners not present. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Will you excuse the late one today?
Yes.
You are excused. You're not absent, you're just tardy. Also, we'd like to welcome our alderman Steve Baxter and alderwoman Debbie Ross here with us today. If you will, please turn your cellphones off. And commissioners, there is a printout from the city council that relates to some items that we had on our previous agenda. If you'd like to take a look at those. New map for the public hearing, item number four, is in your packet. We will come down to it. Also, commissioners, there will be a Better Communities Lecture Series. I think that you have been supplied some information on that.
Talk real quick on that.
Go ahead.
You've got the handout there. They need to know tomorrow morning if you want to attend. So, if you guys are interested, call tomorrow morning. At around noon, there were still openings, but the deadline was today, but I said we might be calling tomorrow. So, if you can give them a call first thing in the morning and tell them you want to attend.
And where is it?
It's at Metro Plan on the-
At their offices.
At their offices. There's that conference room in the middle there.
Okay. Thank you. Also, if you are here for a public hearing, special use case number 2017-11, to allow outside diagnostics and service work on diesel trucks located at 11,600 Maple- Maybelline Road in North Rock, that has been postponed, so we will not be hearing that today. If you're here for that, you may be excused, or you're welcome to stay with us. You have been submitted a copy of the minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any corrections or additions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to be approved as submitted. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move right into our design review committee, development review committee meetings. Mr. Don Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met and considered SD 2017-39 Pine Street Elementary additions, lots 1 AR and 2 BR, replant of a commercial lot located at 1920 North Locust Street. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 10, and with that, the development review committee recommends approval.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions from the commissioners? Are there any from members of the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. We considered item B, SD 2017-41 Collins Industrial Park. Oh, by the way, please let the record show that Chairman Clifton abstained from SD 2017-39. We considered item B, SD 2017-41 Collins Industrial Park, lots 17A and 17B, replant of commercial lot located at the northeast corner of Collins Industrial Drive and Crystal Hill Road. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 10 and subsections, and with that, the development review committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item C is SD 2017-42, the villas at Northwood Creek, lots 1 through 79, and lots AH, preliminary plat of a residential and commercial subdivision located on Crystal Hill Road. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through-
Thirteen.
Thirteen and subsections, and with that, the development review committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that this application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item D is SD 2017-43, the porches at Rockwater, lots 1 through 12, replant and site plan review of a residential subdivision located at the northwest corner of Parker and Rockwater. The applicant was present, agreed to items 1 through 15 and subsections, and with that, the development review committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this application? Yes, sir. Please come up and give us your name. Come to the podium, and the microphone is right there, right in front of you here. Yes, sir.
My name is Liam Davidson. I've got a letter for this hearing, and I called the city planner, and he suggested I come down here.
Excuse me. Pull the microphone up, speak into it, please. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. The- it's my understanding that this rezoning here, which wasn't included in this letter, includes closing the alley, okay? That's behind the property that borders Parker Street. And putting a gate in the middle of the alley and denying access to the property owners that own the property that's not part of the Rockwater development. That's not on this letter, but when I talked to Tim Rivas, he said that was part of the agenda.
Is this right? What- I don't know the letter you're referring to.
It's the notification letter.
Notification letter? Okay.
Yeah.
What we are- what we- That allows it-
He's got a letter from number nine to rezone the exist- to rezone from an existing PUD to an updated one, so that's item nine on our agenda.
That is- the letter you're referring to is not part of this application that we're dealing with right now. It's coming up later in the meeting, if you'd like to address it then. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from anyone in the audience on this application? Any comments from the commissioners? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item E is SD 2017-45 Valentine Edition Track 1, replant and site plan review of a restaurant located at the southeast corner of Highway 391 and Barton Road. The applicant was present and agreed to items 1 through 12 and subsections, and with that, development review committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
That concludes the development review committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Again, we'll move right into our public hearing. Item number one was postponed. Item number two is special use case number 2017-12, to allow animal boarding in a C3 zone located at 7422 North Hills Boulevard. Is the applicant here, or representative? Please come. Give us your name for the record, please.
My name's Mandy Marshall.
And I'm Justin Harris.
You see, have you been supplied a copy of the conditions to be considered from the planning commission?
Yes.
And do you agree with those conditions?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Yes, sir. Y'all?
Yes, I'm Joe Reynolds, and I'd like- I don't have a copy of what the conditions are. I'd like somebody to tell me what the conditions are. I know when you understand that's going to be boarding animals, small animals, dogs, or whatever, and I know when you put forty or fifty of them together, it gets pretty loud sometimes, so I know we need some conditions of some kind, so could I hear some condition that's been proposed?
Okay. The hours of operation, seven to seven Mondays, and Monday through Friday, eight to six Saturday and Sunday. Allow 56 indoor boarding stalls for small and large dogs. North considerations, animals are allowed only outside during hours of operation. Wooded tree buffer of the residential area to the north to remain. All structures located on the property shall meet all federal, state, city requirements and codes. Business license to be issued after the planning staff confirmation of the requirements, and business license holder understands that failure to comply with these conditions may result in the loss of the special use or loss of business license and/or removal of the electric power meter. That's your understanding?
Correct.
Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Chambers?
Yes. Did y'all open the Hounds Lounge on Rebsiman? That is correct. Nice facility. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from any of the commissioners on the application? Please call the roll.
Banks.
Yes.
Blasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application did pass. If you'll see Mr. Spencer, he can tell you what your next step would be. Thank you. Good luck. Item number three, rezone case number 2017-15, and special use case number 2017-13, to rezone from an R1 to an R2 to allow special use for a mobile home located at 3815 Crystal Hill Road. Is the applicant here? Please come up and give us your name, please.
Okay. What you got? That's A.J. Lewis. And I'm Jim Lewis.
Have you have- have you been supplied a copy of the conditions to be considered?
Yes.
And do you agree to those conditions?
Yes.
Okay. One thing that I'd like to ask during the site plan review committee meeting of this, you were asked for a perk test for that extra lot. Did you receive that?
Not all. We have all the county approvals right here, copies.
Is that the perk test for the existing mobile home?
Yes.
What about perk test for the one that you wanted to put in?
It's already there.
It was already there?
Yeah. We had the county to come out, inspect it, approve it, got a new address, and put a new water line in, also had it inspected and approved.
Let me see that, if you don't mind.
Is there a question?
So, what I'm hearing you say is you have a separate septic permit for the existing mobile home.
Yes.
Then you- a new permit for another mobile home.
No, no.
That's- okay.
It used to be two, then.
Well, what- but what you would- what you're trying to do then is put two mobile homes to one septic town.
One, one of them. There's only one.
Okay. All right.
This approved.
All right. I got you.
I made that.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Let me hold on to this.
Mr. Clifton, there's a sign on the property that leads you to believe that they were adding another mobile home.
Yes.
That's where the confusion is, because it says for more to rent, or something to that effect, so that may lead you to believe that they were going to put two.
Well, that's-
So, that's where your confusion may be.
When I inspected it, that's what I thought that was there. Okay. I see a lot of people here. First, let me- let me ask this. All of those that would be in favor of that mobile home, please stand. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. All those that would be in opposition to placing this mobile home here, please stand. Okay. Do you have a spokesman for your group, instead of everyone voicing pretty well the same thing? Your spokesman, please come up. If y'all would, please step aside and let them come up. Yes, sir. Give us your name, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Wickliffe, and I'm one of the landowners on Cullen Road, which is down the road from Mr. Lewis. And the reason we're here tonight is not against Mr. Lewis, as much as it is for the aesthetics of the neighborhood that we live in. This neighborhood has about 25 single-family homes. They're nice, the yards are maintained, very peaceful neighborhood. The houses range from anywhere from $100,000 to $190,000. The one thing that we would like to see is that aesthetic maintained. I know the city of North Rock has done a wonderful job of improving the city and keeping it beautiful. As we speak today, there's a tax that's being voted on to assure more money to the city to make much-needed improvements for this wonderful city, and the one thing that we would like to see is neighbors to Mr. Lewis is that a mobile home not be allowed. And again, it's not against Mr. Lewis as much as it is anybody that wanted to apply for this application. One thing that we'd like to ask the board to do is not to approve the rezoning. As y'all know, y'all know more so than I do, sometimes when you put mobile homes in an area where there's residential houses, it can reduce the value of those homes, which in turn would reduce the amount of tax dollars that would come to the city in North Rock, and we would sure not want to see that happen. So, anyway, again, we would like to ask y'all to not rezone this property.
Okay, Mr. Wickliffe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a minute, please. Yes, sir. Mr. Reynolds?
I am in opposition to this, and these are good people. I don't know them, and I don't know him, or whatever, but I do know that I represent Meadow Lane Property Only Association, and we're opposed to a used mobile home being parked between two nice houses. And I'll give you a little scenario. You go out here and build a $500,000 house. If you're not careful, you'll have somebody put a hog farm or a savage yard next door to you. Now, this is not the place for this used, I don't know what model it is, but I know people need a place to live, but when you buy property, you should know what the rules and regulations are before you do it. This one's already there, and it's already been hooked up, and probably somebody already living in it, and now somebody's got to call and start the process of either shutting it down, making a move, or whatever. But, you know, like I say, there's rules and regulations. I don't care what- if you buy a piece of property, either the federal government, the state, county, the local, somebody has some kind of rules and regulations, and it seems that a lot of people don't follow those rules because of ignorance, or because they don't want to, or because they think they can do whatever they want to. And in my area alone, out there, in the last few years, there's been five of these turned down. So, what we're asking you to do is turn it down, just like you did all the rest of them, and not start making exceptions to somebody to bring it in here. I know it appears to me that that property, they've been selling cars out of the front yard, they're running the garage out of the- or whatever, mechanic something out here. They're doing a lot of stuff on that corner there, and it's not good for the neighborhood, in my opinion. And another statement I'd like to make, I have been threatened with bodily harm because I come down here and speak against situations like this and whatever, but I'm still going to be coming. I don't scare easy, so I'm asking you to do what's right, and let's make this neighborhood look like- I've been living out there for more than 35 years, and this is not the place for this used mobile home, or any other used mobile home in that area. We've got zoning, you've got codes, you've got everything, and it seems like people don't want to do it until they get caught, and then they want to do three Hail Marys and everything's okay, so it don't work that way.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Okay. We will allow one more if anyone has anything different they'd like to add than what's already been said. Yes, sir.
My name is Neil Scott, and I'm the developer for the buildings on a property fairly close to this rental lot, and I just would ask wholeheartedly, my wife and I, that as we move towards the residences that are there, I will be respectful of everything they've got, and try to build a very nice barrier between the residences and our warehouses. The value of my property is at risk here. I'm very concerned about it. My tenants are very concerned about it. We're trying hard to do the right thing, but from a commercial and a business standpoint, there's no add to us. It takes away from what we're trying to do, and we're a long ways from done in that area. We want to try to do a lot more good things, and some of the other business people up the road from me, I know are concerned about it if they're not here, so from a business standpoint, we'd sure like to stay away from that kind of development in the area.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. The staff has a recommendation, that staff does not support two residential units on a single lot, and that has been the policy of the North Rock Planning Commission staff for many years that I've been on this commission. You have- you have something else you'd like to say, Mr. Lewis?
Off the property. Ladies and gentlemen.
Please go back to the microphone. Okay.
The plane, there's one of their junk trade about 10 feet from my property.
Okay.
We need- we need to get you in the minutes, so you have to-
Please go back to the-
I want you to look at the picture, please. This picture I've got is an old junk mobile home in 50 foot of my property. A man lives in it free, because it's not past level, really, and they got enough nerve to complain about my nice mobile home sitting out there. And all in the house next in that property, it's a neat old home, and there's water meter there. There used to be two mobile homes there for about 20, 30 year. I got all the permits, thinking the city had nothing to do with it. I didn't try to pull nothing.
Mr. Lewis, the problem we have with what you have going on and what that is there is that was grandfathered in before this all ever came up, so we have no jurisdiction over that at all.
They've exaggerated a lot of this.
Pardon me?
They've done a little exaggerating on the property. You got a- you're looking at a railroad track.
Well, we understand. We've been there. We've been out and inspected the property.
And the property, they're talking about around a curve, and not a house in there worth over $150,000, talking about $200,000, $300,000 of houses.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
A couple of questions.
Question has been called for. On the question, please-
Mr. Chairman, supported by order.
Mr. Chambers?
Would you please announce how many votes are needed to pass?
Okay. On this, for his applicant, Mr. Lewis's application to pass, it would take five votes of the commission for it to pass. If it passes this commission, we would send a recommendation to the city council that we recommend that it be approved. Doesn't say that we're going to do it, anything. The city council has to do that. If this commission votes not to pass it, we would send a recommendation, if he chooses to go to the city council, that this application, the planning commission, recommended not to pass. All we are is strictly a recommendation to the city council. So, whatever happens here today will strictly be a recommendation to the council. Okay? One more. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Even though all of you's not here, you still-
Yes, sir.
It's five of the number of commissioners. Five out of nine.
There's nine commissioners, takes five to pass. Okay. Question has been called. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I've got a- I've got a couple of questions. First, let me make sure I understand correctly, the mobile home that is shown in the pictures and everything that we've seen on the site, that mobile home has been there for how long? Go to the mic, please.
I moved it in there. Nobody had nothing to say, thought we done it all like you're supposed to. Hundred dollar permit to check the water line, even run the mobile home, everything. Nobody said nothing. I've got it leased out for a year. Boy's is living in it right now.
And how long- how long has he been living in it?
He's been living in it about a month and a half.
And the mobile home's been there, so mobile home's been there about a month, couple months?
Just saying, we got the plants, the water and everything hooked up, electricity.
About a month and a half that it was moved in there?
Two months. And he leased it. Leased it for a year, living in it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm not understanding it. Has the mobile home been there for a year?
Oh, no. It's-
It's been there about six weeks.
Yeah.
And he's been there for about three, four weeks.
But he has it leased for a year.
Oh, you have it leased for a year?
Leased it out for a year. He was glad to get it.
Okay. And I have another question. How has- how has the property been maintained in regards to trash or anything out there out along the-
When we moved it in, you know, we had some work to do. Got everything cleaned up, grass cut, and-
We have underpenned, we're going to all this, so we really did.
It was done, been underpenned till this come up. I've got the underpenning laying there to go under it.
Okay. So, if I'm understanding correctly, the mobile home has been moved to the site, been rented out, however, it is, I guess, came to light that it was not properly permitted to be allowed on that land for type of land use. Is that kind of what we're-
That is correct. Okay.
But see, the problem is, we tried to get a mailing address, right? They had- we had to get a perk test and all that, so they sent the health department. We got all that done to get a mailing address, we had to finally get a mailbox, and all of that, all kind of permits, and had no idea the city had control of it.
Yes, sir.
Thought we done everything by the book.
Yes, sir. We understand. One more. Yes, sir.
The last thing I asked Mike at the 911 addressing in Platte County, when he handed me the- when I gave him the approvals from the septic to get the address, the last thing I asked him was, "Okay, what can I put on this property?" And he told me, "Anything residential, if it's commercial, you might want to contact the city."
Okay.
To my knowledge, that's all we knew.
Yes, sir. I understand.
So, I was trying to put it together and lease it out.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chambers.
Just to clarify for Mr. Banks, if the unit was moved approximately 50 feet to the west, it would be on a separate lot? It'd be a totally different question. But he wants two units on one lot, so he's asking to have it rezoned to a zone that would allow us to give him a special use to have two units on one lot.
Oh, so you're planning to move another unit?
No, no, no. There's nothing moving. Same one. Look in your packet, and you'll see that the lot, there's a red line around the total property, the black line is the second lot.
Right.
If he moved that red trailer part- trailer 50 feet to the left of where it's shown, it would be on a separate lot. It wouldn't be two units on one lot.
Okay.
So, it would be a totally different question, and we wouldn't be discussing it. It'd be a different question in terms of that, but because it's two units on one lot-
Yeah.
-that's the issue.
Okay.
Does he understand that?
Yes.
We've explained it.
Mr. Banks, and just a little clearer, what are you saying? We'd still be here, no matter what.
Yeah.
Because it's a mobile home.
A mobile home.
But it'd be a different type of question, but we'd still be here.
Okay. I get it.
Okay. Question has been called. We've deviated from that a little bit.
Just a little bit.
But question has been called. Please call the roll. Ms. Kees, on the application.
Banks.
No.
Blasco.
No.
Chambers?
No.
Foster?
No.
White?
No.
Chairman Clifton?
No. Your application here did not pass. You do have the option to take it straight before the City Council. You would need to get an alderman to sponsor that before the City Council. It would have a recommendation from this body that it not be allowed, but the City Council can take our recommendation and use it for what it's worth, or they can go ahead with what they want to do with it or not. So, it would be up to the City Council at this point. Thank you.
That's a good reason.
That would be something that you would have to get with the city staff about, but you would still have to come into the regulation of a special use to put a mobile home on a lot. So, if you want to get with Mr. Spencer, he can explain that to you further at a different time. Thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming on this application. You're welcome to stay with us. We've got a few more items on our agenda, or we'll recess for a couple of minutes and let y'all disperse if you'd like to. 2017-4, to allow a car sales lot in a C4 zone located at 2906 MacArthur Drive. Is the applicant here? If y'all would, please step on out into the hall. All right. Go ahead and give us your name for the record, please.
Jesse Moulton.
You are wanting to put a used car lot in on MacArthur Drive. You were at the Site Plan Review Development Review Committee meeting. Have you picked up a copy of the conditions to be considered?
Yes, sir.
And do you agree with all those?
Yes, sir.
We had asked you for a current survey at that time, and I guess this is the extra that's been provided in our plan.
Oh, he have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got it here. So, as Mr. Chambers has pointed out, the lot line is in the red, and there is islands before those, so you would not be able to park.
No, he had a new one I gave him today.
That's what they have.
Yes, we have it. We have it. We have this one. We have the survey.
So, it doesn't change the fact that you will not be able to park any cars inside the islands?
Yes, sir.
They would have to be back behind the...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm sure you wouldn't be thinking to put any out there anyway.
No, sir.
Okay. And you're asking for, I think I remember seeing, five cars? Is that...
Twelve. Twelve? Five. I don't have five at the time.
Twelve it says. I'm sorry, say again.
Well, that's one you got. You got to revise one in your...
What, Mr. Spencer, what is the application asking for?
You got to revise one in your new agenda.
The red area, based on our calculations, allows 12, but he's only asking for five plus a employee vehicle for a total of six.
Well, if he's allowed 12, why couldn't we give him 12?
But he's only asking for six.
I don't want the five, Mr. Clifton. That's all I...
Five, five plus an employee, so six vehicles on the lot. That's all he's wanting.
You know, when them income tax come in, you go, "Oh, cars."
I know. I've been dealing with five cars for 30 years, so I don't want to change it now.
Okay. So, you agree with all the conditions?
Yes, sir.
Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Okay. Please step back, and Mr. Moulton, step back and let him come up, please.
I'm Joe Reynolds, and I've lived in this area for, in that area for more than 35 years. And it seems to me, from Pershing Boulevard, which is about 25th, out to the 5900 block of MacArthur Drive, we have about six car lots already. I was hoping we could get something better than a car lot to come in some of these locations. Some of those car lots are, I guess, grandfathered in, and they got 40 cars at the old spot there, so I have issues with too many car lots on MacArthur Drive. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Mrs. DeGee Moyer. I live at 49 Cliffwood Circle, which is directly above this location. There's a cliff there. There is a traffic problem there. That exit that is served by Doyle Venable was very poorly planned. Please don't do anything else to add to the congestion. We oppose it because we understand the company wants to really put in a car wash, and we certainly don't want that to be open 24 hours a day.
Okay.
Please consider this.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Is there a car wash going in there?
No, sir. Car lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from anyone in the audience? Any comments from any of the commissioners? Mr. White?
And I trust you, but if a car wash went in, it'd just sit shut down, right? For her understanding?
We'd be back here. Car washes would...
Okay.
Well, that's a car detailing or a wash. It's not big enough to put a car wash on it.
Well, she said a car wash. And a car wash means driving up and someone hand washing it.
There's no structure, they'd be coming back here no matter what if they built something.
Okay. I just wanted her to know that, not him, because he already told me he wasn't going to put a car wash in.
We'd be coming back here for anything built.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chambers?
Will you have a small office building?
Yes, sir.
You have a small office building?
Yes, sir. I have a car lot now, but I was bought out by CarLink, and they have an office building on it. And they put it in the plan that I had got today where the building, the stuff was going to be at. And it's, I forgot what size it was, but...
It's on the, it's on the back here.
It's there.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah.
Sorry. I was going to ask, where were you located?
I'm at 2206 Pike.
Right next door to the new building that CarLink bought.
I've been up for 38 years.
22nd Pike.
Okay. And you've been there how long?
38 years.
And someone bought you out, is that what you just said?
CarLink. CarLink.
CarLink.
Bought the property, and they bought my business, so...
So, you're just looking to relocate?
Just relocate. Yes, sir.
Okay. On the question, please call the roll. Ms. Kisa?
Banks?
Can you say you're not sure yet? Yes.
Blasco?
No.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes.
Five.
Five. It did pass. If you'll get with Mr. Spencer, he can tell you what you want to do next.
I thank the committee.
Thank you.
May I ask like one more question?
Yes, ma'am?
There will be a group come to the City Council protesting this. We strongly protest it. If you could hear recordings, that some of the people that travel the freeway cuss North Little Rock, Argenna, the whole county because of that intersection and all that commotion there. It is a bad deal. We'll try to come to the City Hall.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number five, conditional use case number 2017-6, to allow a car sales lot in a C4 zone located at 1700 East Broadway. Is the applicant here? Yes, come up. Give us your name.
Lamont Jackson.
Okay. Mr. Spencer, is this the second or third time this has been before us, before?
First time with this gentleman. Second time we've heard it, had this same request. So, if you're under the PC background, conditional use for car sales lot was approved by the Planning Commission, 6 to 2, in September of 2014, and went to City Council in October and was turned down at City Council. But approved 6 to 2 by you guys.
Okay.
Asking for the same, same exact request.
At the Design Review Committee meeting, you were furnished a copy of the conditions to be considered. Have you looked those over?
Yes, sir.
And do you agree with all those?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak against this application? Anyone? Any comments from any of the commissioners? Mr. Blasco?
Is this one allowing only six cars? And you're aware?
No, ma'am.
Yeah.
Huh?
It said on something I read, six.
Not on this one.
Well, it's on...
How many cars were you requesting?
Under the background, number six.
Yeah.
Well, six.
Are you just asking for six cars?
That's all you're asking for?
On the background. Looking at item five. First page, right there.
It's on there.
It's on there.
Right there, Norman. Right there by your pen.
I see.
Under conditions, item five.
All right. What is the, what is the highlighted red, Sean?
That's the paved area on his property, and then we divide that by 450 to come up with how many cars he can have on the lot.
Okay. So, why are we allowing for six cars?
That's what you divide it by and...
You take the paved area, area, divide by 450. So, why is that so small is what you're asking?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. This is a lot more than...
The yellow on the property is not the property line. There's 15, 20-foot of right-of-way that goes into the, well, actually goes up to where the red line is. So, the property is only actually...
15 square feet.
Yeah. Up front, before the building. So, visually, it looks a lot larger than what it is.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Banks?
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. The application did pass. Get with Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Item number six is to rezone case 2017-11, to rezone from I2 to C3 to allow for a commercial development at 41 Collins Industrial Place. The applicant, please come up.
Good afternoon. I'm Eric Holloway with Holloway Engineering. My client in this case, the Crystal Hill, has been built along Collins Road and along this particular land. He would like to take the undeveloped portion of his Collins, original Collins Industrial Park lot, and as you approved, the lot split earlier tonight, and rezone that to commercial consistent with the other undeveloped lots that are along, along Crystal Hill, along that Walmart development.
Okay.
And there is not a development in, that's imminent. He would just like to rezone it for sale.
Okay. Staff recommendation does support this application. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Banks?
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
White? Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Application did pass. Get with Mr. Spencer. Thank you. Move to item number seven, rezone case 2017-12, to rezone from R4 to R0 to allow for a zero lot line residential subdivision located east of the Villas at North Wood Creek Development. Is the applicant here?
This one. Eric Holloway again, here.
Okay.
In this case, we previously had an approved site plan for a multifamily development, four plexes and duplexes with 108 units. My client has, has a new buyer that would like patio home, single-family lots, zero lot line lots. So, we're now actually basically downzoning and creating 79, I believe, single-family lots in, from the 108 units that we had previously.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Banks?
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass. Get with Mr. Spencer. Thank you. Item number eight, rezone case number 2017-13, to rezone from R4 to C3 to allow for a commercial development at 5609 MacArthur Drive. Is the applicant here?
Yes, I'm Milford Trossclaire, Mainstream Development.
I'm sorry. Give us your name again.
Milford Trossclaire.
This is for a family dollar development?
Yes.
Has there been any activity to the office on this, Mr. Spencer?
Zero calls.
The staff does recommend approval of this. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from the commissioner? Mr. White?
Oh, yeah.
Well, come. Yes.
I'm Stan. Stan Smith, and I think I'm going to be right next door to this, 5521. I haven't, I just received this in the mail for this notice, so I didn't know anything about it. I'm all for development, especially business development, so I'm in your, in your corner. But I want to know a little bit more about it, so I need to do my due diligence. I just got this in the mail, haven't done, I haven't seen anything on it. So, one quick question I did have was, was there any conditions? And then the second question I would have was, is there a plot? Is there, you know, where this is all going to be built at? I just, is there a picture?
Be glad to give you this.
To answer one of your questions, this is the first step. It's a straight rezoning to a commercial zone, so there are, you can't, there are no conditions or anything. He's going to come back with site plan review for the building next month or...
It's already been submitted.
Okay. So, we'll hear it next month, probably. So, we're not at that step yet. So, right now, just getting the zoning correct, and then we'll be looking at the driveways and trees and location at the next meeting.
Okay. Well, that's fine with me. It's good.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. White?
Yeah. Tell me where the loading dock's going to be? Because we have, I think it's a family dock on MacArthur that's down by the Waffle House, across the street from Hogs.
Dollar General.
Dollar General. When the truck comes in, it blocks the highway. So, tell me how the, when, what the plan is on, because I can't see where it's, the loading dock is.
It's going to pull off the back street, which I think is Mayflower.
Is that the parkway? Parkway.
Parkway. And it's going to come straight alongside the building. The, the, the loading dock is right on the side.
So it's not going to have to back up in the middle of the highway like the one?
We're not allowed to do that anymore.
Okay. Yeah. We didn't allow it either, but it happens.
Yeah.
All right, well, I appreciate you answering that, thank you.
Well, currently that one lot is, is, is zoned commercial in the front, it's just the back part is not zoned right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments to me the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Banks?
Yes.
Belasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass, get Mr. Spencer and he can tell you what to do. Thank you. Item number nine, rezone case number 2017-14 to rezone from an existing PUD and R-4 zone to an updated PUD and to allow, and to amend the land use plan from community shopping to Malta Family to allow for residential development at the northeast corner of Parker and Rockway Boulevard. Please come up. Give us your name again.
My name is Glenn Davis and I own some property on Parker Street that adjoins this property and, uh, as from my conversation with the man that's wanting this rezoned, uh, he's wanting to close that alley that adjoins this property and put a gate there that blocks access to Rockwater Boulevard to the property owners that own the remaining property that borders this alley.
What's your address?
Do what?
Tell me what your address is.
My address?
Address, where you live there, your property?
It's Fourth and Parker, I don't know, there's no residence there, so...
323.
So you have a vacant lot there.
Okay. Do you have, your, your property backs up to the, this alley you're talking about?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, okay, that's, I just want to put you in context of where you were in that neighborhood, thank you.
Yeah, well, anyway, I got a letter as a petition to, uh, sign to do away with this alley and, uh, I did not sign it, okay? I don't, I don't agree with the fact that, uh, that, that alley should be closed off or access to Rockwater Boulevard be denied to the property owners that own the remaining property that border this alley. And the letter I got states that, um, provide signed letters for petition from all property owners, not renters, that, uh, abut or have access to the street or alley, letters or petition will be needed and signatures and addresses from each property owner. Without the support of all property owners, the process stops.
All right.
Commissioners? This is something that's going before city council, so it's not really, I mean, you're welcome to listen to and everything, but the letter he's talking about was for an action at city council to close the alley.
Okay, Mr. White?
But we, we do have a conflict, because when we voted earlier, under 12F, I mean, 12G, it says private drive, alley should extend from Rockwater Boulevard, if I'm talking about the same alley, to West Fourth.
Correct.
And built to accommodate the weight of a fire vehicle. So we just approved that that's got to be built to the weight of a fire truck. So aren't we in conflict with what's going to city council?
The, the gate will be, just as any other gate before the fire truck, they'll have access to the gate to be able to open it.
But we didn't say there should be a gate in our, our requirements. We didn't say anything about a gate there.
It does say though, to meet the fire department requirements.
Yeah, but the alley's not gated now, right? Is it, is the alley gated now?
No, the applicant wants it to be gated.
But it doesn't say that in what we voted earlier.
No.
Then...
The, the, read number one or two on that list, it says, uh, the PUD must be passed by city council before we can do anything else below. So if city council does not approve the alley with a gate on the alley, then, then negates the whole, everything else below it. So everything is hinged on city council voting on that.
I don't blame them for not, for...
But, but, but he's not being denied access, he, he has access, it's just not through the alley. He can use the other half of the alley, get on Fourth Street, come down Parker.
But it's worthless if you can't drive all the way through it, in my opinion, so I'm, I'm kind, would, I mean, it, it, there's not a way to provide, we're going to provide the fire department with the key, right?
Correct.
There not a way to provide the landowners that live on both sides of this a key? Is that something that he could bring up at city council?
Yeah.
So this isn't our issue on the, on the alley, this is city council issue. But I'm with you, I don't think they ought to be able to gate it and lock you out.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what's going on. I mean, none of this was stated in this letter I got, that for this rezoning, you know...
We're, we're not voting on that today, on whether it be shut down or not, that's a city council deal. Am I right?
This goes from here to the city council, is that...
Yes, sir.
Correct. This group will make a recommendation, a yes or no recommendation to city council. And then city council will have the final vote, uh, either yes it gets approved or no it gets denied.
All we are is a recommendation, but, Mr. White?
Let me, let me ask one, but are we voting today to close that alley?
No.
Okay. We're not voting on that today, that's a city council deal, that's what I want to make sure, because I wouldn't vote for it if it was.
Correct, there, there is a gate that is on the drawing that will, that you'll be voting on.
Hold on, hold, just a minute, wait, Davis.
Go ahead.
The, the, the drawing here is the PUD and that's what you're voting on, so the gate is shown on that drawing. But again, city council is the only one that could approve or deny the, something going across the right of way.
So we're voting on the gate or we're not voting on the gate?
You're voting on the gate if city council approves it. Again, you're making, you're making a recommendation, so you can make a no recommendation on the gate part of it.
Well, if we, if we approve this in a private drive, that means it becomes non-city public property again.
With the number one thing of city council approval, yeah.
Yeah.
But, correct.
But if we make a recommendation to go forward as per the application and we're approving, making a private driveway out of a public alley?
Correct.
Put a gate on it.
And, and that's why the, the, he received something in the mail about asking for signatures.
Well, he's wanting to put a gate in this alley, okay? Block the alley off, he's going to do away with the alley and put a gate in the alley which denies access to our property to Rockwater Boulevard.
Exactly, I understand, yeah, I understand your argument.
And we sort of jump the, usually the applicant can discuss, answer your questions on why he's wanting to do something, you know, we usually hear from them first to...
All right, hang just a second, Mr. Chambers.
Give their argument.
Sean, just to clarify, the only part of the alley being closed is south of the gate.
Correct.
And we, it's a PUD, we can make a recommendation to the city council that the alley not be closed.
And that's correct.
That's what I'm getting ready to do.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it, we, it's, it's a completely malleable thing, you don't have, it's not a take it or leave it.
I just want to strike.
Okay, uh, we have not had, heard from the applicant, please come, please come up.
Okay, yeah, just ask him if he would.
Thank you.
Go ahead and give us your name for the record.
Uh, I'm Lisa Farrell with, uh, North Plus Development Corporation, most commonly known as Rockwater Village. And, uh, we are doing this area as the porch is at Rockwater. With me is our engineer, Manish, uh, who is with McClellan and just had his ten year anniversary yesterday. Will you be happy to address any questions about the alley? Or would you like us to talk about other matters before we go to the alley?
Let's talk about the alley first, please.
Surely. First of all, the alley is currently not a through alley, it is curbed and sidewalked at Rockwater Boulevard. And it is not paved, it's really kind of a, a leftover dirt path. And so where it joins Rockwater Boulevard, there is a full curb and sidewalk. So, um, it's not currently open to vehicular traffic. The only portion of the alley that we are seeking closure is pro, uh, uh, our property adjoins e, e, both the east and the western side. So from, uh, so the only portion that we're seeking closed is a southern portion. We actually, uh, will improve dramatically, uh, what is there currently by making it, uh, at Rockwater Boulevard. Uh, it will become open so that the fire, uh, truck does have access, not only from Rockwater Boulevard, but all the way through. They will have, uh, key or, uh, gate access. The gate, um, again, only stops at our property, it does not gate off, uh, the whole alley. And again, the alley currently is not a through alley because it stops, you know, Rockwater Boulevard is fully sidewalked and curbed. The, uh, property at the corner of Fourth and Parker, uh, has access, continued to have access to the alley if it's so desired. Uh, they also have access from off of Fourth Street and Parker Street. The city council will, will hear this and will be glad to visit with them as well. We would very much like to work with the homeowners and, um, uh, the landowners to incorporate them into all the good things that are happening at, uh, in that area.
Okay, Ms. Farrell, uh...
What is, what is, what is the purpose of, of making that a, a private way there for access to those, um, looks like, uh, five residences? Where you, you know, the five on, or the four on Parker Street is, you know, access from there is from a public street. Is it because we don't allow, uh, parking to pull directly onto a, a public street if, if this wasn't private?
Uh, I think one is, uh, to, to create a sense of, uh, a neighborhood in the area. Two, uh, to work with, uh, the parking along there. We, as you might notice, we have some parking there. And, uh, really just to, uh, continue what we're doing i- in the Rockwater area.
Thank you. May I ask one more question of our staff? Sean, if this southern portion of this alley becomes, instead of private, becomes public, will that was, what, five parking spaces be allowed to back onto a public r, street?
Onto an alley, it would, it would, it's never going to be, be a public street. It's not wide, it, not wide enough and, but so it's an alley, it will always be some sort of an alley.
Okay, good.
Or, or driveway.
Cause I know we can't, you don't allow them to back into public streets like that, so, but an alley's okay then.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So you could use that and back in to the alley?
Yeah, even if it's public or private.
All right, got it.
As where, anywhere in the city right now, there's garages off alleys that you pull into the garage and then you back, back out onto the alley.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes, City Grove backs into the alley, not a problem. I have a question regarding the location of the gate. It appears to split a driveway for the second B unit from the north coming down.
Let me see, I'm looking.
And there are two driveways north of the gate that would not be...
That's correct.
Quote, protected by the gate. How do you plan to address that?
They can either have a clicker or they can come in a different way.
Okay, so the, so you're saying that the, the... I, 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 how, how does the gate separating or splitting the driveway work?
Then we'll, we can work with the adjustment of where that location is.
Okay, so that's figurative, not literal. Illustrative, not literal.
Yes.
And you're saying that the folks in those two northern B units would have a remote that would open the gate for them so that they could access their garage from Rockwater?
Yeah.
Or they can come in from the north?
And currently, again, there's no way to go up that alley.
I would, I would suggest and urge that rather than the gate becoming the thing that we focus on about this development, that the gate just be taken off the plan and if traffic warrants it, you have issues about it or anything, you can always, as a separate issue, come in and close the, the right of way, the alley to the south. It's a planted alley that goes all the way through today, and just because it doesn't function, doesn't mean it's not an alley, it's actually planted. So, uh, I would suggest that you, we remove the gate as an issue entirely. Drop trying to close the alley entirely. If it becomes a, an issue later, then you can certainly petition city council to close the alley and put in a gate and do the lockbox and all that kind of thing and it won't clutter your current PUD issue. I don't see you falling on your sword over a gate.
I, I, I agree with your wise advice.
You would need to speak those words out loud for that to be so, though.
Okay. You want me to say it again?
You have, you have to say that out loud yourself, you're the owner, not me.
Yes, I, I would be, uh, fine with dropping the gate.
Take, in the private alley? In the private way?
I have a very strong preference for the private way. Where, we will be making improvements and so forth. But again, I am open to, to wise advice if need be.
Mr. Banks?
I guess I was trying to understand the, uh, the intent or, I guess if you will, the purpose of the gate and then the fact that whether it's a gate or not, of course, the drawing says it's a private drive. Does that mean that there'd be, I guess, people complaining about people driving through or, or? Trying to understand what, what this drive is, I mean, you said it wasn't, uh, paved or something.
It's not currently.
So I assume you're going to pave up to your property line?
The city has requested that we pave further than our property line, so we will do as the city requests.
Okay, so you're going to come back and you're going to pave this?
All the way to Fourth Street.
All the way to Fourth Street.
Oh, you're paving all the way to Fourth Street?
Yes, that's a requirement.
At the city's request, yes.
Oh.
Paving and building to hold a fire truck, so it's just more than paving, it will be substantial to be able to hold a fire truck.
And, and what was the gate for?
Uh, we want to keep this, uh, as a neighborhood. What, what we're working on in Rockwater is to create a cohesive neighborhood of the same architecture and so that's one of the reasons we wanted to do that.
Can I?
But we're, but we, but we have removed the gate, so the gate...
I understand, if you just say, and the private drive is going to be an alley, then the whole issue is moot.
And the private drive will, at this point, remain an alley?
Okay. And may, for consideration of future date, so that's your options.
Okay, for consideration at a future date.
All right, so make your, make your motion.
Mr. Spencer, uh, Mr. Tim, do y'all, do y'all have down what we, uh, what the applicant has requested?
Correct. Discuss the remain in the alley all the way through, can we just leave it as drive on the southern half? The, the city was requesting...
Oh, for, for addressing purposes, weren't you?
Correct, because we're, we, we do not want to have to maintain someone's driveway. So that's basically becoming a driveway to those four houses and so we shouldn't, that's why the, the alley was being abandoned and then given to them as their maintenance.
It was never explained, it was never quite expressed as exactly why it was not going to be an alley all the way through, just in a different location.
Correct.
You're saying the city would prefer not to maintain that alley as of access to someone's private property.
But if we could just leave it as a drive, take the word private off of it, take the word gate off the drawing and have it approved as is, if that's appropriate.
I'm sorry, and that's an excellent point that Mr. Spencer has raised. The other, um, point that Jim, Jim Jackson has raised is that we are shifting, um, the drive over approximately ten feet. And again, this is something that, uh, we've discussed with all of the public services of the city, the fire department, the engineer, et cetera. And so, uh, we are moving that over, uh, as well.
I understand, so...
And we, and at the southern end, we will be putting in, uh, London Cobble, um, entryway so I could see where the city would not want, uh, to be responsible for maintaining that.
The city would be responsible for maintaining the alley in front of the two northern units.
Correct, well, once it's built to the standards, we would be in the maintenance of it.
Mr. Foster?
After you made your comment about shifting the, the new alley, um, who owns the property there at, uh, on this map that shows 1206 and 1208, I guess Fourth Street? Looks like you're encroaching on...
Yeah, we're not, I'm sorry, we're not shifting that portion of the alley over though, just the southern portion.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
On your drawing, it shows a, a dash line that's...
Only the southern portion that adjoins land that we own on both sides. We're not shifting anything else that, uh, touches anybody else's land. That's an excellent question, Mr. Foster.
It goes right back to you.
Okay.
Yes, excellent question, I'm glad you brought that up to clarify.
Okay.
All right.
Does that, uh, does that answer your question?
Okay.
I'll take your word for it.
Okay, Mr. Spencer, please tell us now what is before us for the vote right now.
Okay. Page two, you have your conditions for consideration. And so it'd be all those conditions and remove any statement talking about a gate on the alley slash a drive and remove the word private from anywhere where it says private drive, it'll just say drive.
Okay. All right, is that your understanding?
So number eleven will be removed, that says gate located in private drive to be approved by fire marshal.
Number nine?
Number nine, private will be removed and...
Fourteen?
Ten, yeah, the word private will be removed on ten.
Eleven, fourteen.
And fourteen. And then the drawing will be updated appropriately to remove those items from the drawing.
Is that your understanding, Ms. Farrell?
Yes, and, and Mr. Jackson?
Who's that mean?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, yes ma'am, you, you had some comments?
Uh, yes ma'am, I guess I am having the fight on the property, 1206, 1208, West Fourth. And, uh, would be on the other side of his property on the alley. But on the opposite side, I end of the alley, where they done Rockwater Boulevard, uh, the city had an intimate domain on that property and obtained... the city had done eminent domain on that property and obtained two pieces of property of mine. One is the one that they now own at Rockwater, and I was wondering how they ended up with this property that the city did eminent domain on. How did they end up with it?
That would be a question for city council.
Yeah, that would be.
Okay, well, my, you know, I'm imposed to the fence. Or the gate on the end of my property there.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we eliminated those.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Davis, any other comments?
Well, I just, what just transpired here, I mean.
We've eliminated the gate that you were asking about.
Okay, so we, we do have access all the way from, from Fourth Street all the way to Rockwater Boulevard. And that was the issue that I was concerned with, so.
I just got, I just have one question, since I got two different comments. Is right now, you said you could drive all the way through the alley to the Rockport.
Well, there's a curve at one end of it.
There's a curve.
I didn't put it there, but I mean.
No, no, I'm just asking a question.
It is platted, but it is very, very rough. But yes, you could drive a vehicle.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
I wouldn't do it in rain, but you could drive a vehicle.
Okay, it's an old curve.
Through it, but.
Yeah, when they, when they put Rockwater Boulevard in there, they put a curve there.
Okay, which it shouldn't ever probably been there put first.
Then taper it to the alley.
I got it.
Okay, that's the only difference.
All right, so you're good with no fence, and we can vote for it?
Well, as long as we have access.
Yeah, and we're good.
From Fourth Street to Rockwater Boulevard, I, I think that Mr. Jackson will be able to do what his property, you know, whatever he desires as far as developing it, and, and done a fine job. But I don't, I just don't agree with blocking that alley off. It's a public street, and it should stay that way.
Mr. Quaid, give us, give us your name for the record, so it'll be on the record.
Pamela McQuaid.
Okay. Mr. Banks?
What's, what's the, what's the story with item number four in the background? What is this talking about, the?
On, we have a city ordinance that says all lots must touch a public street.
So this alley has got a public street?
That's why it's going to city council to ask permission for that. Again, if, if city council denies that, then all the things we've just done is stopped. So that, that's a request of this PUD to allow lots that don't touch a public street.
Public alley is not an addressable location.
Right.
So we have to waive this rule, so that they can actually get an address, which will be an interesting address to have. When you call Papa John's and say, "I live at 214 Alley between so-and-so and so-and-so." It'd be kind of interesting, you know? It's almost like Station Nine and Three Quarters, you know?
But the planning commission can't waive that, so some city council go, you have, they have to go to city council.
Question has been called. Please call the roll.
Banks?
Yes.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Application did pass, amended as it was, and Mr. Spencer can tell you where to go there. The next item is item number 10, rezone case number 2017-9. I have an interest in, so I will turn this chair over to our vice chairman, Mr. White.
Is that in?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, case rezoning, 2017-9. To rezon from a current R3 zoning classification to a proposed I-2 zoning classification, and to amend the land use plan from public to light commercial to allow a tow lot. Is the applicant here?
That's light industrial, Mr. Chairman. You said light commercial.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Thank you for correcting me on tape. Light industrial to allow a tow lot. Is the applicant here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Norman Clifton, and I own this property. It's about four and a half acres. And I have a potential client to put a automobile repossession tow lot there for no longer than three years. Which time we hope the new freeway would be coming around there, and it would be available for some very good quality investment for our city.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the audience? Is there any comments from the council or the commission? Okay, with that, would you call the vote?
Banks?
Yes.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now's the time for a public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Lou for adjournment, oh, sorry, Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Reynolds.
Hey, hey.
Nice to see you.
Hey, I appreciate the no votes on the, on the used manufacturer at home. And I'd like to make a comment. I believe the fellow that owns this property owns a lot of property in different places, and I'm of the opinion, he knows better, and he should have did better. And you did good by turning him down. When we get to city council, I'll be up there saying the same thing I'm saying right now, so thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Lou for adjournment.
We had a trailer, Jim Baker, live on Sunset Drive, North Little Rock, right up the top of the hill, looking down on us. We had a trailer issue before, as somebody brought up. Took us a long time. And they let it go in there, but finally, we got rid of it. We don't need any more. You're right. And nothing against this fellow, but I looked at all the property he owns in two counties. He's not a poor man. He got lots of it. In Plasky County, in our neighborhood, not necessarily in the city. Some of it's in the city, some of it's in the county. It's all junk. If we let this guy go, he'd have another one looking just like it. There are trailers that are 30-footers that have been sitting there for years. There are houses that are lean-to's and shacks. I don't know if anybody lives in them or not. But I, I didn't bring any pictures, because I didn't want to, I figured it was a lost cause anyway. But anyway, I spent a lot of time researching in Plasky County and Faulkner County. This guy's got over a million dollars' worth of property, and he paid cash for every bit of it in the last six years. So he's no, he's no slouch, and he knew what he was doing, because he's done it before.
Thank you.
So, yes, sir.
Any other public comment?
I only have one. I've been out by that property at least four times. Morning, 5:30, well, 6:00, let's say 6:00, 10 after. Evenings, 6:30, 7:00. And the house next to it, in my opinion, needs to have code, because I think they're running a garage. I don't know if anybody else has looked, but there's 10, 12 vehicles at a time. And I don't know. If they have a business license, I doubt.
It's in the county, so code can't go out there.
So they can't.
So it's sort of a hard issue.
Okay.
Maybe we talk to legal about writing a letter of not doing something, but that'd be about the best we could, is send them a letter.
Well, I just know there's something going on there that, in my opinion, doesn't need to be. And it's at the little house that's right.